We'd be looking at, added to that is the, if the $400,000 cost that we spoke about negotiating with Mr. Queen, if that gets negotiated down to some other component, it drives the cost of that option alternative number six lower as well. So you'd be looking at lesser materials to be excavated to the extent that they disrupt mangroves and seagrass and so on, and our cost reduction.
I mean, I guess if we were assured that the navigational aspects of number six were going to be taken in a high regard as far as there's only so much you can do.
Let me, let me comment about the navigational aspects. I am a licensed captain and been boating for a long time, big boats, little boats, and there is mu- there's as much variation in the captaining skills of the vessel owners as there are in the size of the vessels.[61.62][61.62](Laughter). And no matter what option you pursue, someone is going to have an issue with it.
Yes.
That sounded like a Yogi Bear comment.[75.11][75.11](Laughter).
I mean, you try to make it as safe as you can, as practical for people, built-in safety features, try to make it usable, but the reality is that we have a lot of new boaters that don't have much experience. We have a lot of boaters that have boats that are too big for their operational skill sets. And, and we also have a sense of, you know, you catch a bad day with a strong full moon tide, and someone can have just a bad experience that one time, and that sticks with them for forever. And that's always the one bad experience that they're going to bring up why you shouldn't do this project. But I think generally speaking, in a boating community, I think a lot of people sort of kind of police each other, and actually, in many cases, it's really pride of seamanship is, you know, hey, can I get my boat through here and not hit this guy, not run in this dock? And I think most people are pretty much going in that direction. So the navigational aspect is even harder to really address because, and again, even on the standards, the list that Howard gave me, within that same four-page list was one person who was commenting about the channel width of 25 feet and Alligator Creek being too narrow. Well, West Coast Inland Navigational District has secured a general permit from the Department of Environmental Protection for dredging channels that are basically 30-foot wide at the bottom, which if you go to any of the design manuals, you're going to find out that that channel width is too small. There was another comment that the channel should be as wide as the inner coastal waterway. Well, that's a federal navigation channel, that's 100-foot wide, that's not practical either. So you've got to try and find something that kind of fits. It's like Cinderella permitting, can I get a permit from the agencies that's going to work right? Actually, no, it was Goldilocks, I think was the good, Goldilocks permitting. Can I find a project that I can get permitted that's going to fit, that's going to meet the rationale that the regulatory agencies are going to be looking at your project with? And they're going to be pointing going, well, hey, that general permit from West Coast Inland Navigational District, 30 feet should be fine. It's not.
Well, I guess with just pursuing one alternative, we lose the opinion of cost on five and six. That's where I have concern, too. If we say we're solely going with six, then we haven't even developed, you know, is it going to be double? Is it going to be triple? Is it going to be $50,000 more? I mean, then we really don't, we really won't know, you know, the opinion of cost.
I mean, we can, we can run rough numbers to get you that level of comparison, again, order of magnitude comparison between the two alternatives with what the information we have today.
Kim?
I guess, you know, visually, when I went out there and, you know, not environmentally knowing, it looked like six would have the least impact. It looked like six would be the least cost to do six. Now, it instinctively, that's what it seemed like to me. But if I were you, you're the expert, do you, would you prefer us to give you two choices or would you prefer us to say one?
All right, to be honest with you, I'd rather spend the taxpayers' dollars getting started on the permitting than anything.
Okay.
I mean, I'm happy to run through some opinion of costs on the two options so that city council has some sense of comfort that they're making good decision between the two. That's fair enough to ask for, and that's easy enough to produce.
Okay.
But I would rather see us get, get started on the permitting because that's going to be a fairly daunting task, even with alternative six. And keep in mind, one of the, one of the concerns we had with alternative six was its proximity to the two adjacent property owners. So it's very likely we're going to be looking at potentially something that's sort of in-between both of those alignments as we get to, getting to a final design.
Okay.
I think that we should pick number six. I know that, you know, it isn't the straight shot, but I think if, if it's going to help us get the project done and help get the permitting accomplished, then I think that that's what we should do. I appreciate the discussion, and yes, a straight shot is great, but I think we need to look at the reality of the situation. I appreciate David's advice as well.
I think we go with the expert.
Number six.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, so we have consensus to pursue option number six, and now we need to talk about moving forward.
Well, so we've agreed the matrix is fine. We've agreed to just look at route six. What we're going to do then is sit down with Hans Wilson and come up and negotiate a contract to go to the next step. As I said before, this is going to start costing some money. So you've got, we've got two choices. We either continue, well, we got three choices. We can continue taking a loan from the PGI Canal Maintenance Committee, we're not recommending that. We could find other general fund sources, or we could start the process to put together an assessment area, knowing full well that that takes time, that takes time. We may have to, if, if you are all in favor of an assessment area after we put it all together, we can start fronting the dollars to get this started, and then you will then adopt the assessment eventually. But that takes time. So you have to agree, do we want an assessment area or not?
I'm in favor of the assessment area.
I am as well.
Me, too.
I am as well.
Have we got the unanimous here?
Okay, now we're moving somewhere.[433.28][433.28](Laughter). So here's what we're going to do. We are going to negotiate a phase-two contract with Hans Wilson and Associates. We are going to start putting together the process for an assessment area. We have a pretty good idea of what the boundaries are, we've already done it. We will go out and obtain the services of a firm that can help us put together the appropriate methodology. This is not something that we want to do in-house, because if we're going to do an assessment and we're putting it on the tax roll, tax bill, it'll be a, like you pay a canal assessment fee now.
Right.
It's going to show up as an assessment. We want to have it validated. So there are firms out there that do this, that's what they do. And we'll bring together, we'll bring back to you a game plan for the phase-two and for the assessment process.
Tom?
What's the timeframe on this, Howard, what in your opinion, to get all of this done?
I don't think it'll be long to negotiate a phase-two contract.
Okay.
But, but to put an assessment district together, first of all, it will not show up on the tax bill until the, this is the 2016 tax year. It will not show up until the 2017 tax year, which means we will have to come up with a funding source before to front those dollars to get him started.
Okay. So if that's the plan, I would be good with that, to come up with a source to fund the project and move it ahead.
Yes, that would be fine.
As we establish the assessment area.
A question's been raised that I've been asked about by resident is to make sure that we have equity in the methodology, assessment methodology, between individual residences and complexes, condominium complexes.
Well, are we gonna, didn't you just say we're going to hire a firm to help us?
So I'm just saying, however the firm comes up with that, that's what, one of the feedback, some of the feedback I've received.
Yeah, and there's no question that we need to, whoever it is that we hire is going to have to put together a methodology that will, all public hearings and everything
Right.
that you will adopt, that is going to be as fair and equitable as possible.
Which we do with our canal assessment districts currently, yeah.
Oh, I understand. I'm just, I'm just making that comment that it's been for, you know, so that it's public record.
Okay, we're on our way.
Anything else?
We're on our way.
One more question.
Yes?
I'd like to ask a question of Hans, since we have a number of people here, and this is just for clarity, for no other reasons, but in your assessment, your experience, is this a two-year project or greater?
Well, it's at least 18 months getting through National Marine Fisheries Service on small-to-saufish consultation.
Okay.
So if I can get a Corps of Engineers permit application complete in 60 days, and then it takes Corps another 30 days to issue a final permit, and in that interim, you'll get your state permit reviewed and get a final decision on that, you're the better part of 18 months to two years in the permitting exercise.
And I just, I just want to make that clear so that there's patience among the people that are looking for this project to happen, that it's, it's not the snap of the finger, because it's been a long-term discussion.
One other thing I wanted to comment on, and that was by talking with both Gary and Mark, and going through this particular approach, this is actually different than what our current contract scope is. We're able to come in significantly under budget right now. So we have some funds left in our current contract that we can start applying to final design that will, I think, help the budget on this entire project.
That would be great.
You didn't spend all $36,000?
No.[671.73][671.73](Laughter).
Thank you for being honest about that.
Thank you.[675.43][675.43](Laughter).[676.43][676.43](Applause).
Well, we would have found out anyway.[683.01][683.01](Laughter).
Well, thank you for your time, and thank you for all the work and working with staff and really, you know, letting everybody wrap their head around the decision-making and what, you know, we need to all feel good about how this moves forward, so thank you for that.
Good.
You bet.
Okay, um, let's move on because we're taking the break at 11:30. I guess we'll have a mass exodus now?[710.01][710.01](Laughter). Yeah, let's take a five minutes.
There's a, there is a.[724.12][724.12](Knock on door).
We need Gary and Howard. Howard, Gary, paging.[731.01][731.01](Audio cut off). We will be moving on to the public hearing agenda. We have no public hearings, we have no quasi-judicial public hearings. We do have three resolutions, and we will now take citizens' comment on those three resolutions. Please come to the podium, state your name, you have three minutes.
Good morning, Jennifer Hecker, Director of Natural Resource Policy for the Conservancy of Southwest Florida, and I'll be quick, but I just wanted to support these resolutions and really commend you for bringing these issues forward. The resolution on fracking, we do, having worked on this issue intensively for the past two years on trying to update Florida's oil and gas regulations and laws, we've learned that all fracking-like activity is actually not, in the industry's eyes, called fracking. This is an important distinction that I wanted to make you aware of because it pertains to your resolution, which talks about hydraulic fracturing, acid fracturing, and high-pressure well stimulation. This technique that was undertaken at the Hogan Well in Collier County was not just hydraulic fracturing, but also matrix acidizing, which is a technique of fracking-like extraction that uses fracking chemicals but dissolves the rock rather than fractures the rock. And since the word fracking is short for fracturing, it is not considered to be fracking by the industry. It does, again, it pertains also to the word high pressure. High pressure in the legislation only is pressure high enough to exceed the fracture gradient to create fractures. Matrix acidizing does not exceed the fracture gradient, so would not be captured in that definition. So just encourage you that in your resolution, you may want to consider modifying the terminology to well-stimulation treatments, which would include hydraulic fracturing, acid fracturing, and matrix acidizing. That way you can ensure that you get all the fracking-like activities that are being used here in Florida. The second comment we wanted to provide was with regards to the resolution on seismic. The Florida Coast on Oceans Coalition, of which the Conservancy is a member organization of, along with Oceana, Surf Rider, Thousand Friends of Florida, and Sea Turtle Conservancy strongly supports you passing this resolution because seismic activity can impact marine life, it injures and kills 138,000 animals annually. There are 75 coastal towns that have passed similar resolutions, 18 in Florida, and there are 65 members of Congress who have come out against seismic testing, including local Southwest Florida legislators. So we, we know that there's strong support for you as a coastal community. Certainly, people in this community support the protection of our marine resources, and I think would strongly understand that this is tied to our local economy and want that to be protected. One last thing I forgot to mention on the resolution on fracking, the resolution you're considering, 73 other local governments as of today have passed, in Florida, have passed similar resolutions. So this is a growing movement, you know, we're happy to talk with you more. There, there are some efforts afoot at the state level to preempt local governments from having any meaningful say in, in these activities, and we're trying to fight that. But I think it's important that you take a stand. The Senate is deliberating about this as we speak, and I think it'd be helpful to have your voice in that, in that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So would our resolution be more correct if we deleted the words "high pressure"?
Correct.
And that would be sufficient?
Yes, and other, it would be and other well-stimulation treatments, because hydraulic fracturing and acid fracturing are two types of well-stimulation treatments, but the third type that we know is being utilized here in Florida is matrix acidizing that dissolves rock rather than fractures it. So if you just change the word from "high" to "and other," I think that that would capture it.
Are you okay with that?
I'm not, for example, we've got a line that says, "They've begun to employ new techniques and technologies that combine horizontal drilling and high-pressure well stimulation, such as hydraulic and acid fracturing, frequently referred to as fracking and acidification, to extract." So how would you, how would you correct that?
The, the words "high pressure" need to be eliminated because what high pressure is being defined as commonly at the state legislative level
Right.
is high enough to exceed the fracture gradient or to create fractures. In some forms of well stimulation, this matrix acidizing, for instance, that was used at the Hogan Well, can still use fracking chemicals but not exceed the fracture gradient in pressure.
Would that be considered as well fracturing, I mean, as well stimulation?
It would be well stimulation, but it would not be acid fracturing, it'd be acid stimulation.
So if I, for example, if I modified the first whereas clause by taking out the words "high pressure" before "well stimulation," and, and where it says "such as," but if I put in "such as," but not, but, but "such as," or how about if I say, "including but not limited to?"
Correct.
Okay.
Or if you want to just add the third type, it's technically called matrix acidizing, is the technique that dissolves rock. It's the industry term for the technique of acid stimulation that dissolves the rock rather than fractures it. So you could include that as well if you want to explicitly call it out. But that, that's what we learned from hiring hydrogeologists and attorneys and reviewing thousands of pages of public records at the Hogan Wells, that at that well, they used both techniques of fracking-like extraction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
David McBride, 2533 Brasilia Court. I just want to point out two items on these resolutions. One is that as written, and I think the discussion around how to revise it points this out, these are all-encompassing, broad decisions that cover multiple technologies, some of which may have subcomponents that are valuable, some of which may have components that are not. By making these things overarching and as broad as they are, I believe that we are limiting our ability to send the really important message from these resolutions to the state legislature. I believe that a single resolution which focuses on the need for our elected representatives to be able to exercise management control within their area of jurisdiction is the message that needs to be sent. And by doing such a broad, all-encompassing thing, attacking numbers of technologies, I don't think accomplishes that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Como, 1020 VfMEA. I grew up in South Louisiana, home of the petroleum industry, one of the biggest drilling areas in the country. I've worked in the oil fields. I've got family who grew up and worked in the oil fields, worked for Halliburton their whole lives. I've seen the effects of big oil, big petroleum, on a state, not just in the economic term, but in every phase of its culture and what it does, and it's not something we want to see here, whether it's called fracking, whether it's offshore drilling, or anything. The effects that big petroleum brings with it permeates every part of your society. And when they leave, it's not the same place as it was when they showed up. You know, when somebody's going to strike a match in South Louisiana one day, and everything south of Alexandria is going to go up in flames, thanks to Exxon, Kaiser Chemicals, and people like that who have been there for years. I know firsthand what it does, I've seen what it does, I've seen what it does to people and what it does to the land. I absolutely support these, I feel very strongly about it, and would be in favor of these or any other types of recommendations to ensure that we do not see the effects of offshore drilling or any other sort of major petroleum industry activity in Florida, especially given our substructure here, as opposed to, you know, the Delta-South Louisiana type environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments on the resolutions? Okay, we'll move into the first one.
All right, this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, opposing legislation pending in the Florida Legislature authorizing hydraulic fracturing and acid fracturing and high-pressure well stimulation performed for the purposes of exploration or production of oil and natural gas in the state of Florida. Opposing legislature, legislation pending in the Florida Legislature that delete provisions in Section 377.24 Florida statutes, which prohibit the state from granting permits to drill gas or oil within the limits of a municipality without approval of the governing authority of the municipality. Opposing legislation pending in the Florida Legislature that prohibits local governments from regulating all matters relating to the exploration, development, production, processing, storage, and transportation of oil and gas, including but not limited to land development regulations intended to protect the property and residents within the territorial limits of local governments, providing for distribution of this resolution and providing an effective date." Now, I've got a couple of things first.
Okay.
As a matter of housecleaning, in the second whereas clause, it has been brought to my attention that four words were inadvertently omitted, and those words were these "well-stimulation techniques which follow" were whereas, so that whereas clause, as corrected, would now read, "Whereas these well-stimulation techniques involve the use of chemicals and hazardous materials during construction, drilling, fracturing, gas and oil production, and delivery, well maintenance, and work over operations," semicolon, "and." So with your permission, I'd like to make that change.
Yes.
I appreciate the, the comments. I would suggest that the, those technical details would best be argued before the legislature and the committees in Tallahassee. Time is of the essence. I handed out to you the last two pages from the Legislative Staff Report. This is from the, the Senate Appropriations Subcommittee on General Government. They had a hearing on January 27, 2016, where they adopted, the committee adopted amendments to the, the bill as it was originally filed. And you'll note that these, the amendments do address to a large extent some of the concerns we had regarding the ability of municipalities to regulate the activities by means of zoning, so it took out the pro, the preemption. It does, it would require the city, as it's currently written, to adopt new zoning ordinances that would specifically address the impacts of these activities. It, it does require that applicants for permits provide notice to the municipality, and gives the municipality the opportunity to raise objections to the permit, and that the state agency that would be issuing the permit is required to consider the comments of the municipalities before granting the permit. It expands the scope of the study that was to address or investigate the potential impacts, and the state regulations pursuant to the amendments are to be drafted, considering the impacts identified in that study, and that no permit could be issued until this, until the rules that were based on those studies take effect. And so there has been some modification. That's not to say that that's going to be what is in fact going to be adopted in its final form by the legislature. So I think there's still merit to us submitting the resolutions, but I don't know the timing. And so since we know that it is being talked about now, rather than make our resolution technically perfect, I would suggest that we simply go ahead and, and adopt and get the resolution to our legislative delegation, et cetera, as soon as possible.
I'm on board with that.
I agree.
I agree also.
Yes.
I'm not going to object to this at all.
Okay, so we have consensus to add those three words.
Four words.
Four words. Um, do we, does somebody want to move that we, yes?
I so moved.
Do you want to address the "high pressure" wording? Do you want to, would it change, would it delay us in any way, David?
Well, it, I, I think every minute, every minute that we delay kind of dilutes the effectiveness, and as it, as it is, I mean, as a practical matter, we're one of many communities that are, are doing this, but if we're going to do it, we ought to get our name in there before it's too late.
What if we just delete the "high pressure" the two words?
Well, it's going to take me, I mean, it, I'd have to review it.
Okay, okay.
I just assume, we've already made the correction of the four words.
Yep.
I think you're, I think you have a form of the resolution that
Is correct.
is, is correct, and so we can have you sign it, and we can get it up there today.
Okay.
So moved.
I'm okay. So moved?
Second.
Second.
Can I clarify what the motion is, please?
Sure. The motion is to add the four words
These well-stimulation techniques to the second whereas clause of the resolution I just read.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you. The next is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, supporting a statewide ban on hydraulic fracturing, acid fracturing, and high-pressure well stimulation performed for the purposes of exploration or production of oil or natural gas in the state of Florida, providing for distribution of this resolution and providing an effective date." This also has a need for correction of the omission of the four words, "these well-stimulation techniques," in the second whereas clause. I would, I would just repeat what I had previously said regarding the previous resolution. Let's get this up there.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, with the additional wording, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
I'm done?
No, we have one more.
We have one more, but I need to be recognized.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Resolution number three.
All right, this is, this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. "A Resolution of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, opposing seismic air gun testing in the Gulf of Mexico and providing an effective date."
Questions, comments? We've already had the presentation.
Presentation, second.
Motion, second to approve the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, we'll take a three-minute break.
Thank you.
Citizens' comments on consent agenda items, which include the approval of the minutes, invoice of Allen Norton Blue, urban design resolution declaring public purpose for parcel land lying in Section 6. Is that it? Who else was there? Is that it? Yep. Any citizens' comments on any of those? land lying in Section 6. Is that it? Who else was there? Is that it? Yep. Any citizens' comments on any of those agenda items? Okay. Seeing none?
Move approval? Oh, wait, do we have any, I don't know, if anybody wants to pull any items?
Does anybody want to talk about the minutes?
No. I'll move approval, consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is the Legal Department invoice.
We have, no, those, this is all, and so now we're right there.
Okay. Regular agenda items, first item is a budget, change to Finance Department Utility Billing and Collection. Do we have citizens' comments?
Can we get them by subject?
Well, it would be, it, it, it would be citizens' comments on all of the
Regular agenda.
Regular agenda, which includes the budget, unfinished business, and new business.
New business.
Ray Rose, 3631 Darren Drive, Punta Gorda. I would like to refer to Item 7A, discussion of the South County overlay and future one. Thank you very much for putting it even on the agenda. I think I attended every one of the public meetings on this subject over many years. At the last session, my recollection is that there was a compromise offered that the overlay would apply to 17 coming into the city, US 41, and I can't remember whether Jones Loop was included or not, but I think it was, specifically omitted was like Taylor, where it was mostly industrial. After that meeting, there was only one objection, to my recollection, and that was by Bucky McQueen. All the rest of the people that had been there and objected were satisfied, because the industrial areas could continue to function as they were. My suggestion would be to have a resolution or motion go to the county commissioners specifying the overlay for 1741 Jones Loop, and request that it be placed on their agenda and voted upon. I think the option of an election adding to the ballot in November is near impossible, because you've got a presidential election sheriff, and if you have the city charter, every one of those items has to go on. Thank you very much for your consideration and for your support for this action.
Thank you. Okay, any more citizens' comments? Okay, we'll move on to the budget.
The request from the Finance Department Utility Bill is to take a part-time position to full-time status. The impact is $9,500 in utility funds. There's a number of reasons why. Increase in number of accounts and workload, succession planning, as we have some folks in there who will be leaving us, and we'd like to train a full-time person, so that they can eventually learn all the operations in there, and we've had a heck of a time trying to keep a part-time person in that job.
Nancy?
Just a comment. Howard, I think it would be important for the record to clarify that when people are in the drop program, that does not mean that once they join the drop program, they are there for the duration, that as you explained to me, that once they enter the drop program, they can leave at any time.
Anytime.
So, it's, and, because I've had residents actually question, well, if they're in the drop program, how long are they in the drop program for? Do you want to wait until it's, or their time to leave is coming up? And as you explained, we don't know when they're going to leave, so we have to be prepared. So that's, was a good explanation.
Anyone else?
I'm supportive of it. I'm in favor.
Do we need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
We have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Next is the Public Safety Community Garden sign.
We have two alternatives for you. If you would like to just pick one, we can then put it up. We're getting it.
Nancy?
I like option number one.
Okay.
This is option number one?
Yes.
Want to show option two?
Can we do them with this, side by side?
Now, you're getting quite technical.
We're getting fancy. We're getting fancy. And the reason why- So, the team Punta Gorda is first, and then on the second, or the first one, or the second one, first one, and then city is first on the second. Go ahead, Nancy.
I was just going to say, the reason why I like the first one is that the mention of the, the parties are, is in the same order as which the logos are, and I would be fine with the second one if we just switch team Punta Gorda and the city's position there, but I think the city of Punta Gorda, and the second one, if we're going to mention city, the city should be capitalized, so.
Yes, that's right. So, one or two?
Sounds like I'm having my eyes examined.
Do you need a motion?
Well, we would have this, it would be, so, yes.
I'll make a motion that we adopt number one.
With the city capitalized, of course.
No, number one is, that's number two.
Okay. Oh, there we are.
Number one is the.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Now, we are on to new business, discussion of South County overlay and future direction.
That was placed back on the agenda. What we are recommending, based on lack of ability to get anything approved, is a very well-defined shortened area. 41 to Burnsthor Meadow, just a commercial corridor on 41 to Burnsthor Meadows. That's it. And on 17, which is Marion and Olympia, out to the Welcome to Punta Gorda sign, by the Shell Gas Station there, and that's it. Because we can't seem to get anything else accomplished. We think that has a, a chance for survival. It's, the work is done. The county has established all the regulations in a draft form. All they have to do is attach an ordinance to it, and I've already had discussions with the county administrator. And what we may want to do, if you approve that well-defined shortened overlay area, we might be able to get a joint meeting together with a draft ordinance and the regulations, and keep it moving.
I've had, I've had some discussion. I'm actually on a committee called Facelift 41, and it's something that Tricia Duffy organized, and it is, they have zones mapped out, and the first zone being from the bridge to Publix Shopping Center. And during those meetings, and I think in our joint meeting, it would be nice to have this kind of discussion, the county is funding the phase, the Zone 1 improvement.
When you say Publix, you mean Publix up by, in Charlotte Harbor?
Yes.
Yes.
So they are funding that Phase 1, which is landscaping and that type of thing. We have code enforcement people there, we have public works people there, so, and they also mentioned at the last meeting that there was funds for the gateways into Charlotte County, including Jones Loop Road, and including 17. So I think it'd be nice to have a clarification of all that in our joint meeting, so we kind of understand what's going on with that, too.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I know that there are, I'm on the Landscape Committee for Charlotte County, and I know that there are a number of areas that the committee wants to address. In some cases, we have to delay because of widening of 75, but we have been awarded some funds to help pay for some landscaping on Jones Loop Road. But I think by adopting the district that we are, we are probably eliminating some objections by some interested parties, and I think it would help us get it accomplished. I agree, kind of packaging a discussion together, because the county's all on board on the committee that you're on.
Right.
And so it, I think it might help.
I think just having that, so that we understand the whole, the comprehensive actions that we need to anticipate. So, I had a conversation with Ken Doherty also about this, at the Hands Across the Harbor, and he, he agreed, and he liked the idea of a meeting. He said to talk to Howard, have Howard talk to Ray, and we'll get all of the pieces together, and get together and have a meeting, and so I like, but even with that limited scope that you have, I mean, that's getting that started, to put that meeting together.
If you agree.
I just want to see something. This has been going on for, I mean, I know, Tom, you and I have been working on this for-
2005, yeah.
Yeah. Is that a motion?
Sure.
What kind of a timeframe would we be talking about if we, if we agree to the concept of limiting to, to 41?
The work is done. All they've got to do is develop an ordinance, a draft ordinance, and then the timeframe would be setting a joint meeting date.
We haven't been successful in doing one of those in a couple of years, but they'll, they'll work.
Do we, but let me back up. Do we need a motion, or are you looking for direction?
I would like a motion that says, here is the well-defined area.
Okay.
That's it. Do not expand beyond that, which happened the last time and created some controversy. Just that, draft an ordinance to go along with the regulations that have already been developed, and let's put that on a joint meeting agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. The next item on new business is application for state funds by the Peace River, Minnesota Regional Water Supply Authority.
The Water Supply Authority is asking for our support for their effort to garner state funds for future interconnects. Staff has no issues whatsoever.
Do you need a motion?
We do.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
What, I'm sorry, what is your motion, please?
That we support the application for state funds by the Peace River, Minnesota Regional Water Supply Authority.
I'm sorry, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, we have recommendations from city officers, city manager.
Well, the mayor already went through a lot of my announcements, so I don't have to do that. Because of the significant amount of leaks that we've had, utility staff has put together every single street and address on what we're working on, along with sod and size and type of sod that will be replaced, and whether it's needing concrete for driveway and sidewalk, and they have started filling in, the contractors that are out, that we have out there, starting to fill in address by address. So what we may do is, we may put that schedule out on the website, so people can take a look at it.
I think that would be great. I've had requests from Twin Isles Country Club as to what's the status of theirs, and it just so happens that the break was underneath the driveway that goes into the bag drop-off area, and people drive golf carts across it, come from the 18th hole, over, excuse me, over to the, the bag drop-off area to leave the carts, et cetera. And it's, I know it doesn't look good, but I know that the response from utilities director was that, that the contractor was notified immediately the day of the break, so we're doing everything we can, we just need to be able to share the information.
That would be great, Howard.
So these are just water main breaks that we have on this report, is that correct?
Yeah. Look at this list.
It's huge.
It's a big list. That would be great, if you could put that on there, so people can see it there.
Okay, we'll do that. That's it.
Anything else? City attorney?
Nothing further, thank you.
Nothing from you. Okay, city clerk?
Yes, the first thing I have is the Charter Review Committee, at your last meeting, or your meeting before, you established the procedure. Everyone provided the name of their district representative, along with, some of you also provided additional names to select your at-large and your alternates. So what I've done, I thought the way we would go about this is, since the at-large members would actually serve, and alternates only serve if, if they're needed, we would go ahead and use the list, I have six names that were put forward to choose from, so I thought we would use those six names and choose your at-large first, and then the remaining, we're going to choose two, and then when the remaining four, we would choose the alternates from those remaining four, if that's acceptable to you. I also thought, if you, if you want to, since we just have those, you could actually have four alternates, but I don't know if you want to do that, just choose your two at-large and have the others, or do you want to just choose two alternates? We can choose the at-large first, let's, let's do that first.
Yeah, well, just one?
Two, you're choosing two. Mm-hmm.
I will.
So, the Iowa caucus. My, my very first year as the city attorney for Northport, first election, it ended in a dead tie, and I had to go into the law library at midnight, have them open up the courthouse, to figure out how to resolve that, and the answer was by a flip of the coin.
No, I heard on the people discussing it on the news, on the radio, I can't believe they actually would flip a coin in it.
Actually, the statute says a drawing of lots or something similar. The, the two appointees are Jake Die and Harvey Goldberg.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll choose the alternates, I'm just scratching Jake and Harvey from your voting form. Okay, so you have four names remaining, and we're going to choose two, choose two alternates, please.
Okay.
And the rest of that story was that the two people that were tied was the mayor, who had been there for 25 years, and someone who decided that they would run, just, just so that there would be a race, because the mayor had always run unopposed for 25 years. And the mayor decided that she would step down, rather than, rather than make such a prestigious office dependent upon the flip of a coin. So we end up with a guy that just ran for the heck of it.
Oh, my.
That never happens here.
Okay, so, the next appointee is William Hughes, and we have a tie between Vic Poitras and John Barash.
Okay. Tie between Mr. Barash and Vic Poitras?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, you now have two names on your voting form. Please choose one, even though it says vote for two, please vote for one.
So, we don't get two votes?
Okay, let's have a coin. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, the next step, and with the charter review, will be to bring you a resolution that, that says we'll ratify what you've done and to convene the committee. And then the next step after that, we'll, I'll get with the committee members that you've selected and schedule their first meeting.
Great. I think we have a great committee, huh?
Too.
Yeah. Good, good.
Okay, then, moving on to our regular boards and committees. Under vacancies, we still have our unexpired term on the general employees pension board. Under nominations, we have a three-year term on the Burnsthor Isles Canal Advisory Committee. We have three eligible applicants for nomination. I don't need a motion.
Nominate all?
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't need a motion. Thank you.
How long have you been doing this job?
I'm just impressed that you were able to tell that story while you were, you know, counting the votes.
I had to count it three times after I did that.
That could have been called into question.
She usually just looks at me, and I say nominate all, but I can't.
That's, see, that's what's...
That's a missing link.
Okay, under nominations, the, we have an applicant for an unexpired term as an alternate on the planning commission. If you would like to nominate and appoint at this time...
I'll nominate and appoint.
I will need a motion.
Oh, I make a motion to nominate and appoint.
Thank you.
Second?
A second.
I'm asking for a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. For the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Advisory Committee, we now have only three applicants for that unexpired term. One of the applicants has withdrawn his name, Gary Skillicorn, so you have three applicants for nomination.
Will to nominate all?
Is there a second?
Oh, I don't need a motion on that, to nominate. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Policy and legislation. I really have nothing. Councilmember comments? Nancy?
No comments today. I'm just, it's been a productive meeting.
I want to thank everybody up here that we did pass some resolutions regarding oil enhancement, as it was something, obviously, that was close to my heart and onward and upward.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I mean, that's amazing how much stuff was in all that.
Thank you, Gary. Tom?
Sure. I attended the, the recent MPO meeting between Charlotte, Punta Gorda, and Manatee, Sarasota County, and most of the program dealt with the river, was it River, River Road? River Road, as an evacuation and the funding process for it, and they seemed to be making a good bit of headway on that. And the other issue that came up is there were several presentations on bicycle-friendly communities, and our, our own bicycle pedestrian coordinator, Mitch gave, Mitchell Austin, gave a presentation to the MPO along with, with Officer, what's Kathy? Katie Heck?
Katie Heck.
And it was, there were a lot of favorable comments from the, from the members about our bicycle program in Punta Gorda, and many of them had been to Punta Gorda and taken advantage of the free lawn of bikes, and just wanted to mention that to you.
Oh, that's great. Great. That is great. Okay. Citizens' comments?
Steve Fabian, three-three-six-seven Trinidad Court. Over a number of years, periodically, the council discussed the safety issue of the intersection of Maude and West Marion. Now, all of a sudden, there's another deterrent there, an electronic sign erected on public property. Now, how did that happen? That's public property, and typically, in the past, when stuff came up at the Visual Arts Center, this council had to be consulted. Now, all of a sudden, here's this sign out there, electronic sign, and I've been told it hadn't been permitted.
It has been permitted, because it met all of our regulations.
How did it get permitted?
We, we permitted it.
How? Why?
Because it's within our regulations to do so.
What?
It is. It's within our code to do so.
Why, why in the past did, when they wanted to do something at the Visual Arts Center, it had to come before this council?
Would you like to explain?
For the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official. The Visual Arts Center property is zoned at Neighborhood Center. It is not zoned public, so it would fall under the Neighborhood Center zoning regulations. The sign was allowed at that location because the Visual Arts Center does hold classes and falls within the educational category for changeable copy signs. They, it cannot be scrolling, flickering, or moving in any manner. The message can change one time a day.
Thank you, Terry.
Don McCormick, one-three-zero-eight, Viamillanace. You all got a letter from me, I think, in support of the forty-one beautification project. Councilmember Kavanaugh, you suggested I pass that on to the Board of County Commissioners as well?
I do. I think it would be a good idea to pass that letter on to them.
All right. I will do that. And one thing, clarification, the change to the forty-one removed all those streets east of forty-one, no, we're not on the forty-one corridor, was Matzalan, and the people that are off forty-one, the, the sign approval wouldn't affect them either. Is that correct?
As far as I understand, what, what we're talking about...
Right. Just frontage on forty-one, not the, not, right. Okay. Thank you.
Just frontage on forty-one.
Okay. Any other citizens' comments? We are adjourned.